Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, February 22nd, 2018. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. First item on our agenda this evening would be the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Huffaker, would you lead us?
Absolutely. Everybody, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for a roll call this evening, we have six council members here. Councilmember Bailey is excused this evening. First item tonight would be our consent items, which includes today's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Sparza, because my right ear is working better than my left, to approve today's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item tonight would be citizen comment. This would be a time we'd allow any member of the audience to come up and address the council. We'd ask for your name and address for the record, give you about three minutes or so. Anybody willing to come up and discuss tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. I sent an email to Mayor Kuntz a couple days ago.
Your name is?
Oh, sorry.
I need to know, and your address, just so we have it.
Okay. My name is Shelley English. My address is 1818 Skyline Drive, number 32, in Wenatchee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I sent Mayor Kuntz an email a couple days ago that he said he was going to share it with the council regarding the traffic problems we have on Skyline. Did he do that? I'm not sure if -- okay. Trust but verify, right?
I did. No, yeah, you should.
Politicians and kids, you gotta trust but verify.
Especially the politicians.
Yeah, I know. So, and I just realized I forgot my glasses, so this can be interesting. So, since the reason for my visit was in the email, I thought I'd take a few minutes tonight to talk about maybe some suggestions to fix the problem. So, I just wrote a few things down. So, thank you, Mayor Kuntz and the council, for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Shelley English, and I live on Skyline Drive. I'm here today to talk about the problems with speeding and reckless driving on Skyline, and how traffic going to the overlook is a huge contributor to the problem. I will share one part of my email here, because it's the basis for my concerns. People use Skyline Drive for three reasons: because they live there, or they have occasion to visit someone there, deliver a package; to go to the overlook; or, in conjunction with number two, to use Skyline Drive to practice their mad race car skills. Just last night, I was entering my driveway, two cars flew by me up the hill at a high rate of speed, and so I turned around, and sure enough, both of those cars were at the overlook. Mayor Kuntz told me that the issue has been brought up before the council before, and a couple of suggestions to curb the underage drinking and drug use that goes on up there was security cameras and possibly closing the overlook at certain times. Security cameras would only address the problems that occur while people are at the overlook and do nothing to curb the more dangerous issue of speeding and reckless driving. Cameras need to be monitored and managed, and would only be useful after something bad had already happened. Closing the park, putting up a sign that says, you know, "Open from dawn to dusk," or something like that, wouldn't be a deterrent either. The kids would go up there, they know there's not a big police presence there, and it would just be the neighbors' multiple calls to the police every night, saying, "The kids are there again, and they're not supposed to be." And I think our police officers have more important things to do than that. I personally would love to see the city add speed bumps to the worst parts of Skyline Drive at the top, not like the ones in a shopping center, but the low wide ones that you sometimes see in newer subdivisions, or even the speed dips that are popular now in some places. But that's really expensive, and I don't know if that would be financially feasible. Security cameras and closing the park at night are passive and reactive solutions. I think something -- we need to do something a little more proactive than that, and something that's financially feasible. I think we just need to close the overlook to car traffic, put up some concrete barriers, and close it. People could still access it on foot, but cars wouldn't be in there, the kids wouldn't be there in their cars. You know, if they wanted to do bad things at the overlook, they'd have to do it right out there in public, because they couldn't park their cars there. Also, if the Black Rock subdivision is approved, that's going to add at least 17 more houses to Skyline, and that's more traffic. Have 17 more families up there that have to put up with this BS all the time. So, closing the overlook might not completely stop the problem, but it's something affordable that I think we can do right now to curb the unnecessary and reckless driving that goes on on our street. So, I hope you'll consider my suggestion today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Good for coming in.
I do -- well, some of us have talked a little bit, and you can stay there or sit back in your chair.
Okay.
It's either one, whatever you're comfortable doing. A few of us have talked a little bit over the last week or so. We're not trying to be reacting to the events that took place over the weekend and the tragic accident, but I've talked with our chief crown about, you know, how do you enforce the overlook? What kinds of things can we do from a police presence and traffic? And our city engineers, as we've emailed him, and he's given us some comments back in terms of, you know, what our options are. And, you know, it's actually a city park that pull out his own business, a city park, and it's, you know, one wonders if we shouldn't turn it over to our Parks Board to have a bit of a public discussion about the future of the overlook and whether or not we should close it to automobile parking and see if that works. So, council, you guys have any sort of thoughts and discussions? You okay with me letting the Parks Board take a run at that, or what are you thinking?
Well, temporally closing it would obviously see if that's going to solve the problem, but I think you're still going to get your mad, your people up there driving, testing their skills, and that's still probably even a bigger problem than all the people going up to the overlook.
Yeah, so, to me, there's two issues there. There's the overlook and the use of the overlook, and whether there's a community benefit to having the overlook anymore or not.
That would be easy enough to test by just blocking it off.
And then, I think the second part is, there's traffic on Skyline that some of it has to do with some of the folks that are using the overlook going up and down, and some is just kind of people driving poorly to begin with. So, they're kind of too separate, but they're kind of related, and it's like, I think, we've been talking about it, Chief, you and I, long for a year or so often on. I mean, we -- part of the reasons we went through the camera discussion last week was because one of the cameras we're thinking about doing is there, but it's $25,000.
Yeah.
Right? Well, okay. Maybe this points to a different response.
I would be okay with sending it to Parks.
Okay.
And having them have the discussion, but I would definitely encourage the Parks Board to discuss Ms.
Ms. Shelley.
Shelley's suggestions. Those were really good suggestions.
And we got an email from Lisa Stone, who lives just to the -- if you're facing the overlook, if you're to the left. And so, I forwarded her email to, I think, Dave, did you get that one as well? Okay, I missed one to you. Okay. So, we have a couple of different emails along the same sorts of lines, so, David, can you have the Parks Board take a run at that?
Yeah, we can actually put it on their next meeting agenda, which we just had a meeting Tuesday.
Okay.
So, it'll be March 11th.
Okay. And then, think about a more public process for getting public involvement beyond just the Parks Board, if there's some other reason to discuss it, and then we'll see what we can -- and I don't know if I have, I mean, I was joking, I don't know if I have authority to close it on my own just because, so I -- Steve, can you look at that? Let me know if that's something that the mayor has authority to do.
Maybe a temporary closure.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
I like the idea of turning it over to Parks for valuation, especially, it just happened to be good timing. Like you said, we've been discussing $25,000 to get the electricity, I believe, up there for the camera. Maybe that $25,000 could go to a different park.
Right.
If we did close it down, that would benefit more of our citizens.
Yeah. And there's something, and I will, Councilmember Kulas and I, you know, there's, used to be something iconic about the lookout when we were younger, and some of you in the room probably, and Councilmember Kulas and I were on the council when we didn't even own the lookout, and there was a proposal to build a three-story home there, and we worked really hard to make sure we protected the view, which I think we've done. Now, the issue is, is the view's been protected, now should we allow cars to do, and the accessory activities that take place there? We all know what those are, so. All right, David, you got it, Big Guy. All right. All right, thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Coming.
Anybody else wish to address the council on any items that's not before us? See, no other takers. We will jump into our presentations. Only one today regarding St. Patrick's Day. Tom and Dave, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's Mark, he's ready to go.
Dave told me we're coming to the pit of misery tonight, so.
We'll be short.
Therefore, my hat.
We'll be short and green.
So, we have the formal event permit application. First of all, Dave Harold from Resort Radio, KCSY FM.
Tom Urban from wherever I am, P.O., Box 3809, Wenatchee, Washington.
Do you have an address?
No, I do not.
And they're sort of exciting this year. Saturday is March 17th, and so we expect a big crowd down Orondo Street, and we'll make formal application to close Orondo and have the necessary services provided, which we really appreciate after all these years. It is the 37th annual. There'll be a press release out in the Wenatchee world describing who the grand marshal is, and if you've had a chance to go to the parade, no grand marshal has ever appeared in '36 so far, St. Patrick's Day parade.
Still seven-ish?
We're hoping this will be the year that it shows. Seven-ish.
Seven-ish, absolutely.
We will, and this is sort of fun. We have the shortest awards ceremony at Pibus Public Market, which will be around eight-ish. Anything else you'd like to say?
Obviously, we invite the community, and obviously, we invite the mayor.
I have my sphere, whatever it is that I have.
Please lead the parade, as he has in the past.
I have my green coat, my green hat.
As Dave reiterated, it is on a Saturday night, so we're expecting a fairly large crowd this year, so.
Could be a rambunctious group this Saturday.
I would think so.
Yeah.
And we actually have been corresponding with Mark, going over some different ideas for the parade, and so who knows what's going to happen this year.
It'd be nice to see some of the high school students put their thinking gaps on and come up with something nice and whimsical.
Yeah, since we met with him, we've actually put the word out pretty heavily on social media to get some different interactions and people with different ideas.
We should have over, should have over a 30, probably 30 entries, probably more. We are looking for bagpipers, so if anybody has in contact with bagpipers, we could not locate them, they're either out of the area or have left to be in Washington, I don't know.
Maybe people just don't play bagpipes anymore, but if you know of anybody or have contact with anyone that does have those bagpipers, we would like to be in contact with them, because it's very important for the parade, and we didn't have any last year. Therefore, it made me sad.
So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate all you do. Looking forward to St. Patrick's Day.
Dilly-dilly.
Right, dilly-dilly.
Thanks, lads.
Does anyone even know what that means? Dilly-dilly?
No.
I know what it is. Yeah, okay.
It's fun.
Fun. Dilly-dilly.
Oh, there's a meaning to it. I looked it up.
All right. Action items. We have a few this evening, so first up, regarding Rotary Park project agreement. David?
Before Mr. Erickson starts, for full disclosure, I'm a member of Wenatchee Rotary Club and have, on occasion, volunteered out at Rotary Park and worked on it. However, that association with my membership there, I don't believe would unduly affect my ability to act on this objectively unless someone objects to my objectivity.
And I would have the same concern, too.
I think you guys are fine. This is a pretty small agreement, so I don't have any problem with both of you participating.
And it's for the community.
David?
All right, Mayor, council, I'm Dave Erickson, Parks and Rec Director. So, we're seeking a motion to approve the project agreement with Rotary Club for the Rotary Park Parking and Picnic Shelter Project, which I know you guys are probably very familiar with. It's been before you, as a council, previously. We've been working with Rotary to develop the project agreement, which is really based on agreements we had before, like for Washington Park, the picnic shelter project. So, we use that as a model, and so it's a similar agreement. Yeah, you know, it's a pretty straightforward project. I think they would like to get started on it. They've submitted the building permit, and with your approval of the agreement, I'll get that building permit submitted tomorrow, and the project would move ahead. I know Rich Peters is here this evening, if you have any questions from the Rotary side of things.
So, I know in the past, we've had some of these where we put some money in, and then the city had to come in at the end. Is this one where we think we're in pretty good shape budget-wise from the Rotarians?
Ah, you know, I don't know what the Rotary has set aside for the budget for it. I know our contribution was going to be $30,000. Rich, do you know where you guys stand?
We have the funds to finish the picnic shelter.
Good, good.
Should be anything required from the city.
Okay, excellent. In our 30s going towards the parking, correct?
Right.
Okay. All right, any questions for Dave? We don't have many. I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move for city council to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the project agreement with the Wenatchee Rotary Club for Rotary, the Rotary Park Parking and Picnic Shelter Agreement.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature on the project agreement with Rotary Club for improvements to Rotary Park. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you guys' work on Rotary Park.
Thanks, Rotary.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, so the next one.
RCO grant, number B.
Yeah, lots of RCO grants. So, you guys should be familiar with RCO grants. We've been pretty successful, pretty lucky over the last few years. I've gotten about $5.7 million in grants through the state, through these grant programs. With your approval of this resolution, that would authorize us to start the application process. And again, this is about a six-month-long application process. We would be doing three applications for Lincoln Park, different grant programs, but all through the state. One for the Kenzie's Landing Project, and another one for Kiwanis-Meadow Park to tie in with that project. I put all the background information in there for you, and we did actually talk about Lincoln last week at network session. So, the applications actually are consistent with our goals and objectives contained in our Parks and Rec Opens, Open Space Plan, as well as a bunch of other recently completed This year, it's kind of nice. In years past, you guys have had to do a separate resolution for each application. This year, they've changed their authorizing resolution, so we can do it one for all of them. But I do have a suggested motion that, if you choose to move ahead, that I would read to you, and then, because now we have project numbers that we can attach to this as well, and that way, it kind of ties it up kind of nice. So, if you're good with it, staff would then recommend, saying the move approval of Resolution 2018-05, which would authorize staff to prepare and submit Washington Recreation Conservation Fund Board grant applications for Project Number 181266, the Kiwanis-Meadow Park Field Project, Project 18250, the Lincoln Park Renovation Project, Project 181247, the Kenzie's Landing Project, Project 182046, or excuse me, 1246, the Lincoln Park Soccer Field Project, and Project Number 181245 for the Lincoln Park Revitalization Project. And all of these have been recommended for approval by the Arts and Recreation Park Commission. I'll try to answer any questions you have.
So, I'm totally fine with all of this, other than trying to figure out how to make a motion that takes care of all of those numbers and projects in a way that, can we just make a motion based on what David said? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Your honor, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-05, authorizing staff to prepare and submit Washington Recreation Conservation Fund Board grant applications according to how Mr. Erickson described.
Yeah, we'll need to get the notes from Dave for the minutes.
I can, I wrote them down. I think I get them right. So, it's Project 181266, 1820, 250? 182050, 250? Gosh, can't say that. Project 181247, and Project 181246, and Project 181245.
And I missed a one, so it should be 1250.
181250 instead of 18250.
You've got them all, though.
Yeah, I do. It went too fast for me. I can keep up.
Do we have all that?
Yes.
Tammy, are we okay with that?
It's all second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt Resolution 2018-05, authorizing staff to submit RCO grants for all of the projects so indicated by Dave Erickson and in the motion. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, when do you write the grants? When do you go over and talk, and when do we hear?
Yeah, it started a couple months ago. It'll continue through May 1st, is the hard copied first deadline. I'll go over to Olympia in the middle of May, middle to late May, to present the first time, and we get to redo them again, and I'll go back over again in August, re-present. We'll know where we rank probably early September. October, the funding board approves the recommended list, sends that to the governor, and if we're successful, then we would actually have grant agreements. If the state passes their budget on time, probably by July, August next in 2019.
This is subject to the next biennium state budget, not the one that passed in -- okay.
Yeah, and so then, we'd be looking at, if everything comes in great, engineering, end of 2019, construction 2020.
My question was really about which funding cycle of the state we were in. So, it's in the one we haven't started yet.
No, right.
And Dave, can they approve some, but not all?
The, oh, yeah, these are all independent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually, they'll fund $100 million or so, and then in the budget, you got to get it past the budget, and if they only fund $80 million, then you get cut off. Dave's usually first on every one of these, so I will.
He's pretty good at it.
He really is. All right, item number C, David?
So, speaking of which, 2016, we applied for a number of grants, as you may recall. Two of them, actually, all four were successful, two for Hale Park Phase 2, and two for Kiwanis-Meadow Park. And we actually have the first project funding agreement, which is this little guy right here, for the $500,000 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant for Meadow Park. So, this would be the first of hopefully four grant, yeah, four grant agreements that would be coming forward for you guys to hopefully authorize the mayor to sign, and then, once the other, the states approve that capital budget, so now we're just waiting for them to cut loose the other grant contracts. So, from, according to the state, those should be here maybe early March. And once, if all of these are accepted, Kiwanis-Meadow Park will get underway, they'll do the final engineering this fall, and construction bidding would happen right around Thanksgiving this year, and hopefully, construction all of next year will be open by October, the end of 2019.
And for Kiwanis-Meadow Park, how far are we from having full funding?
You know, I have another meeting next week with the Trust for Public Land, so I'll get more information then. I think at last count, it was about $200,000 outside of the grants that they are currently applying for.
Okay.
And that's to do that full three-point, whatever, what, 3.2 million or something?
All right. Any discussions for David? If not?
I just want to know if our attorney read and understood all of that in the contract. That was one of the biggest contracts I've ever seen.
He did.
Yeah, we did, and they're very standard, and there's not much opportunity to amend them.
One thing I should mention on this, too, which is kind of fun. So, we got the grant agreements from the state, and this is federal pass-through money, so it's federal money goes to the state, the state gets a grant, they send it, and we can apply for it. When the state received their funding allocation, it came with a typo on the date, and so rather than trying to go back through the federal process with your approval of this agreement, we have a letter requesting an amendment to our grant contract to extend it out to what the actual original end date was, because as it is right now, we couldn't spend the money and time to do the project, so.
Corrected date.
Yeah. And so, we talked to the state about it, and they said it's not going to impact our grant standing or anything like that, and that virtually, everybody's going to have to do it. So, we have that letter prepared. So, if this goes back signed, it'll be going with that. Just a little fun fact.
Any other questions for David? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-04, authorizing the mayor to sign a funding board project agreement with the state of Washington, accepting funding assistance through the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Kiwanis-Meadow Park Renovation Phase 1, Project Number 16-1665D.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to adopt Resolution 2018-04, authorizing the mayor's signature with our, oh, excuse me, through the Land and Water Conservation Fund for Kiwanis-Meadow Park. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it. Glenn DeVries, propose interim control on cryptocurrency mining operations.
Thank you, David.
Oh, and Matt, oh, we've got the whole team up there.
All-star team.
David and Matt, everybody, all right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Parsons, Associate Planner. Bringing before you an interim official control regarding cryptocurrency mining in the city of Wenatchee. Probably already familiar with the topic, variety of reasons, including the last month's work session where the Sun County PUD staff presented to you regarding this emerging issue in the city of Wenatchee. And staff has been working with them for, over the last couple of months, figuring out an approach to address this. We've crafted one where, basically, we would not allow any more operations in residential and mixed-use areas, and then there's some zones, some commercial and industrial zones where we would allow it, including North and South Wenatchee Business District, Industrial, and the Columbia Street overlay. These are the areas that we, presumably, you'd expect to have robust electrical infrastructure, the places where it'd be appropriate to, if improvements need to be made, that would be the appropriate places where other industries that would be energy-intensive would be expected to be. I believe we've crafted it in such a way to ensure that we, that it covers all of the necessary activities, and then also some language where we believe it perhaps excludes those that don't need to be covered. As you can imagine, this is an emerging technology, and there's kind of a lot of moving parts, and so we're sure to call out the blockchain-based technologies, ensure that we don't incorporate all of other things. Certainly don't want to hinder a local industry. It wants to find a new method of making a transaction, and so we're sure to call out that the not-all peer-to-peer distributed ledgers are being covered under this, that you can use, it's really the production, the mining, the energy-intensive uses, that's what this is about. So, staff was attempting to really hone in on those and not hinder high-tech industry outside of that specific task. This is a one-year moratorium, and within, all right, one year, excuse me, interim official control. My apologies. And over the course of the year, we'll be working through this issue. There is, within 60 days, we'll be holding a public hearing on this issue, and staff will be presenting findings and a work plan to go along with that. So, staff recommends approval of this proposed ordinance.
If I could just briefly talk about the foundation, and if you recall, the last workshop and our discussions, we're really focusing on, you know, public health, life safety, making sure the infrastructure is safe, that there's not an impact with a fire or what have you, and that the capacity's there, and that we can be able to implement our comprehensive plan, that it's not precluding us developments, moving forward with a lot of the efforts we're doing to, you know, the new hotels, the work in the waterfront, being able to develop those out. Right now, in our industrial district, the way the code's set up, you couldn't even Right now, in our industrial district, the way the code's set up, you couldn't even do cryptocurrency mining. So this interim control actually would allow for that, but it would make sure that there's not an impact for life safety or to the infrastructure in coordination with the PUD in doing that analysis. And it'll make sure that it's safe and that it won't have an impact in the commercial areas. This control wouldn't allow for the use of cryptocurrency mining in residential districts, but that's not to say over the process for this next year, if this is adopted, that it, it couldn't allow for it in the future, but it would give the Planning Commission time to evaluate it in conjunction with the planning, with the PUD, and feedback from Labor and Industries on what's the best route to go for residential areas. Do you allow for cryptocurrency mining in residential areas with guidelines and provisions and caps on, on what the intensity of that is? Or do you preclude it? And there's pros and cons on both. And it would give the Planning Commission time to evaluate that and then provide you a recommendation. We believe this proposal would provide a good foundation moving forward to regulate that, protect health and safety, honor the comprehensive plan, and give the Planning Commission time to, to provide you a good recommendation.
Stupid question, just because I have lots of them. Under a permitted use, do I need to get a permit from the city currently?
No, if it's a permitted use, you would not, although there are performance standards, it, it may need a building permit, depending on what they're doing.
Okay.
We do have performance standards that are set up through this that, which as a component include getting feedback from the PUD and Labor and Industries to make sure that the work is done safely, that the capacity's there, would have an analysis looking essentially at the comprehensive plan and intended uses in the comprehensive plan, making sure that we're not precluding those uses and the ability to move forward and implementing our comprehensive plan. And if it did, then it would have a process where the PUD would come forward and say, okay, what would you need to do to add infrastructure to accommodate that use? So it's not a no, it's okay, capacity's not there, this is what you would need to.
But if I had an industrial building currently that had two megawatts of power to it already, and already wired and everything, and everything had been done seven years ago, and I walk in and plug in my mining machines, do I need a city permit for that?
Need a business license.
And, and in many cases, I believe you'd probably need a, some sort of tenant improvement for improvements that you're making to that space, because you are going to be adding HVAC equipment.
Okay.
And those require permits. Attachments of racks that hold servers to the, to the floor, those require permits. So typically, you'd see it through a tenant improvement like any other lease improvement.
So it'd be rare for that to happen without those types of, that would require either electrical permit or some sort of a building permit. Okay.
Which leads into my question. How, how is this going to help the issue that the PUD brought to us? And that's the mom-and-pop shop who wants to just set it up in their garage and not tell anybody.
So that, that's a good question. And so long-term, we'll be able to evaluate and discuss that with the Planning Commission and provide you a recommendation. In the interim period, it would not allow for the use in the mom-and-pop, in the residential areas. The PUD is committed to sharing with us life safety issues in the residential areas, where they see those, this huge increase, the high-density loads in the residential areas, where they could see a life safety issue, they've agreed to work with us and inform us on that. And because that could cause a fire, it could cause an impact to our neighborhood. And so for those, we'll be coordinating with the PUD in the interim. But long-term, the discussion will be what, you know, which is better? Which is, do you preclude it? Or do you provide a path for a certain maximum intensity of those in residential areas?
But I, but I guess the issue the PUD brought to us is, is that they don't have a good way of detecting that on a timely basis until they get the power, the meter is red, and that could be month and a half, almost two months before that meter's red again. And so now you have that safety issue going on for almost two months. And, and, and I was under the impression that that was what they were looking for help with, was that particular aspect of that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I understood.
They could speak to that. They, I think part of the question is right now, it's, it's, we really don't have code structure to preclude it.
Okay.
We have some code structure in residential areas, some guidance on that to do it safely. We, we know it's being done, but not one individual has received, has applied for a business license to do it in residential areas. It does, it's our understanding that it can assist the PUD by saying it's precluded, because they're able to, you know.
So therefore, code enforcement could then get involved? Is that?
And we're able to get involved. It, it can assist them. They could, they, they are here this evening and are happy to answer any of your questions.
You know, I guess from my perspective, these are all issues that will be worked out through the, through the 12-month period. We're asked right now to take some action that, that as, at a certain level. We could, we could go so far as a moratorium, which may actually be a preferable option for some. This seems reasonable to me. There's a public hearing in March. If, if folks have an issue with this, they can, they can come to that. And additionally, they can participate in the Planning Commission process, so we can get answers to these questions. These are really kind of premature, from my viewpoint, until we work through this. Agreed?
Yeah, and I think my, my comments were just making sure that it's still allowed in certain issue, you know, that we're not putting in a complete, right, it's still allowed in industrial and North Wenatchee business. So we, it's allowed in certain areas with a permit, and so for that, I'm, I'm actually in, in favor of it. And, yeah, I think there's just, for me, there's a little bit of what's going to happen over the next two or three months, quite frankly, probably not much, until the Planning Commission gets to it.
Actually, the control allows for it in industrial areas where right now it's prohibited.
Right.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2018-04, adopting an interim official control relating to cryptocurrency mining operations in the city of Wenatchee, to be effective immediately, setting a date for the public hearing on, and declaring an emergency necessitating immediate adoption.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Sparza, to adopt ordinance 2018-04, adopting interim official controls relating to cryptocurrency mining inside the city limits of the city of Wenatchee, and setting a date for a public hearing. And I guess I should say declaring an emergency. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. 10% annexation hearing regarding the Schland-Douglas Land Trust.
Okay.
Brooklyn and Matt.
Good evening, Council. Brooklyn Holton, Housing and Community Planner. We have, you guys received the annexation petition application that was received by the Schland-Douglas Land Trust. They are requesting to be annexed into the city, an area that is just at the end of Maiden Lane, a little bit beyond that. It's about just over 60 acres, and there's pretty much nothing out there. So it's, there's not a lot to it in terms of utilities or taxes or anything like that. Kurt Soper is also here this evening, and I think has a couple of things he'd like to share about the intention around the annexation.
I was just going to ask, what's the intention around this?
I can answer that question.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kurt Soper. I'm the executive director for Schland-Douglas Land Trust. We're at 18 North Wenatchee Avenue here in Wenatchee. And thanks for considering this tonight. As you know, the Land Trust has been a partner of the, of the city over the years in creating trails and trailheads all throughout the foothills, a great asset for the city. We love doing that. And we have pretty much one more trailhead that we really need to put in, that's kind of a part of the plan, and that's in the Maiden Lane area, on this property that you're considering tonight. And actually, the lion's share of the funding to do that would come through one of the grants that Dave just got your approval to move forward on here a few minutes ago. But the reason for this annexation is that by having it being the city would make it easier when that day comes for us to partner with the city and for the city to work directly with the, with the Land Trust in actually constructing and doing the trail, trailhead when that day comes.
Okay.
Again, we're at the first of a three-step process.
Yes, yes, we're going to see this. I continue to comment how awful our annexation laws are in the state, when anyone's willing to listen to me. All right.
For certain cases, it makes sense, because it gives everybody a chance to be heard.
Still, it's a long process.
And the properties that were included on the application are the only ones included in the staff's recommendation to continue, including any of the other properties around it would make the proposed property be the minority representation in it. So it didn't make sense to try and add anything else in.
Okay. Thanks, Brooklyn. Thanks, Kurt. Any other questions for either staff or Kurt? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for City Council to approve the annexation boundary proposed in the 10% annexation petition for the proposed annexation area located in an uncorporated area within the urban growth boundary, to require the adoption of the proposed zoning regulations as it is set forth in the comprehensive plan of the city as residential single-family, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Harold, to approve the 10% petition annexation boundary as set forth in your packet today, and regarding the Schland-Douglas Land Trust annexation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kurt. Thanks, Brooklyn.
Thanks, Brooklyn.
Northwest Wholesale Annexation. Steve King.
Good morning. Or good morning. Let's start again. Good evening. Steve King, Economic Development Director. This action item has to do with purchase of remnant parcels from Northwest Wholesale. The City Council adopted a budget for the purchase of all of Northwest Wholesale in several phases and pieces. And right now, Public Works is going through the right-of-way acquisition process on a portion of their property, leaving a couple remnant parcels. This action item is within that budget authority, and we're asking that you authorize the mayor to sign all the documents necessary for closing.
And, and I think the, the reason we're a little bit ahead of this is usually there would be, you know, purchase and sale agreements to review and all of that, but we have a time schedule with Northwest Wholesale, and the sooner we get going on this, the better. So I know this is a bit of a leap of faith in terms of authorizing me to sign contracts. The purchase price has been the purchase price we've talked about, nothing's really changed. We're just trying to miss a, a council meeting or two if we can get ahead of this a little bit and start the 18-month window that Northwest Wholesale has, as we're trying to meet a couple of windows here.
And in the federal acquisition process, there's not a purchase and sale agreement to sign, it's just a settlement agreement. Yeah.
Well, I think we're all familiar enough, Mayor, so I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the purchase of the remnant parcels and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents related thereto.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor to approve the purchase of the remnant parcels and authorize my signatures on all documents necessarily related thereto. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Okay.
And next is regarding a little surplus of some property near South Wenatchee.
Yeah, this property is next to Stevens Street or the approach to the George Seller Bridge. Over the years, where right-of-way has been acquired there by the state and city to make improvements in that area, have left remnant parcels. The parcel highlighted in your agenda packet is one of those parcels. It's really not configured or big enough to do anything on its own. And the adjoining property owner is working to consolidate all those lots right in there, basically to the east of that line that, where I have the highlight that says surplus parcel. So the first step in, in doing that, if the council would like to authorize us to move forward in selling that parcel, would be for you to surplus it. So this resolution declares that property surplus.
And how long do you think until we have some sort of an agreement with the property owner and those sorts of things? Is that a couple of months away?
Yeah, I think the purchase and sale agreement would come up pretty quickly. There's a little strip of right-of, of alleyway in there as well, and that has to go through a vacation process, but their desire and acquire that portion of alley as well. So purchase and sale agreement pretty quickly, and then a vacation process, just to kind of outline what would unfold over the next couple of months.
Then end up being one big parcel?
They'll end up being, they'll end up being actually two parcels through, through some boundary line adjustments, but yeah.
Yeah, that takes care, it doesn't take care of the stuff on Crescent Street, which we've talked about before, but takes care of everything else.
Yeah.
And puts them in the two parcels. I'm guessing for potential redevelopment.
Yes, yes. We've had appraisals done, and with, the purchase and sale agreement process will address those, those costs.
Okay.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-10, declaring certain real property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Sparza, to adopt Resolution 2018-10, declaring certain real property surplus to the needs of the city. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing item. I don't think it will take very long, regarding our six-year street improvement. We have an amendment to do for one little piece of roadway, I think. So for public hearings, we'll first hear from staff, then we'll turn over to the public for any comment, and then back to the council for their action. So I don't know who's coming, Gary, Matt, everybody, chief, UVK, what are we doing here?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gary Owen, your city engineer. Excuse my voice, I had a little bit of a cold. What I've got here tonight is something that we haven't done since 2012, which is a request to update our transportation improvement program with one project. If you had a chance to look at your packet, it's a little project out in Old Station. It's a new roadway. It's identified as NW5 in the North Wenatchee Transportation Master Plan. And it's a, it provides a connection between Easy Street and Chester Kim Road that aligns with Technology Way. It was a real high-level look back when the master plan was done, and it was thought at the time that it was necessary in order to provide better circulation and traffic flow out in that area when, when the Old Station Industrial Park builds out. The reason that we wanted to get this on the tip and try to get it funded here in the very near future is that there's concerns that we might lose the ability to acquire that property at a relatively reasonable price before it gets developed and built on, and we're having to purchase expensive improvements in the future. So the reason for adding this is so that we can get busy, determine whether or not that's really a beneficial or necessary public roadway out there in Old Station, and if necessary, go ahead and, and acquire the right-of-way. The other thing that's going on is we need, we need an easement for sewer in the same location for our Sunny Slope sewer extension work right now.
Any, any questions for Gary? If not, I would turn over any member of the public that wish to address the council on this public hearing item regarding addition to our six-year transportation plan. Seeing no takers, I will turn over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2018-06, amending the 2018-2023 Comprehensive Six-Year Street Program for the city of Wenatchee, as previously adopted in ordinance 2017-18.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt ordinance 2018-06, amending the 2018 through 2023 Comprehensive Six-Year Street Program for the city of Wenatchee. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Gary. Thanks for being here. Mayor's report. We had a full set of meetings today. We had director's report. We had, the Finance Committee met. We went over all of the department heads' budget spending for last year. Nice to say our revenue came in a million and a half dollars more than we had projected, most of it due to sales tax and utility taxes, and then a little bit on our building permits. And then our expenses came in, about a million dollars under budget overall. So we had quite a little, quite a little year there in terms of putting some more money into our savings account. So the 2018 one will not be quite that kind to us, as we budgeted a little bit better than we've done in the past. So that was some good news. Continuing to monitor stuff in Olympia, there's the House version of stuff and the Senate version of stuff. I'm not sure many of our asks have been, and we're going to get many of them. We've got $600,000 in for environmental work on Confluence Parkway. I don't believe that's going to make it in the budget. There is some money for saddle rock improvements, for ecology improvements. I think a portion of that may be in the budget. We're working on our valley, our future money. I don't know if that's going to make it. There's some other stuff in there, so we're kind of monitoring that. This was to be the week that Senator Cantwell and others were supposed to come to Wenatchee to tour Confluence Parkway. They have postponed it to the March break. They have postponed it to the March break. They have a March break about the third week of March. So, that got pushed back a little bit. Allison, anything else? She just got back from Costa Rica, so she's not even sure she's in Wenatchee yet.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah. Got all these world travelers around here. Council members, anything for the good of the order on stuff you're working on?
Both Ruth and I attended the homeless steering committee meeting. Was it the week before last, I think? I'm not sure. I can't remember.
It was when you guys were in DC.
Okay.
Yeah. Very interesting. They're in the process of writing bylaws and formalizing. It'll be a good process, and there's...
I heard that was a good meeting. Glenn said it was.
Yeah.
And well-attended.
Yeah, it was.
Good.
Thoughts that came up is there's a lot of communities that are involved in that that don't even have representation on the board, and they don't attend, and they're hoping to change that.
And we know if we're going to make any sort of dent in that homeless issue, we need all the regions or all of our partners to be working with us.
Mm-hmm.
Ruth, Lyle, anything else going on? Keith?
I don't think it's this time.
Next Wednesday is the Downtown Association banquet. Yep, it starts at some time. About 5:30, I can't remember.
I've got it, I've got it for 5:00, but I could be off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I will be there for that.
I will be unable to attend, but my wife will be there.
Okay.
Very nice.
All right, everybody. I guess if that's all we have, then our meetings are adjourned. We'll sign whatever you guys need to sign. Gary, you need us for something?